We are up and running. So, good afternoon. My name is Hillary Highslope. I'm the Executive Director of the Cluiston Chamber of Commerce. And if you're tuning in now, we are just starting our Henry County Commission District Five Candidate Forum. I'm joined this afternoon by Michael Atkinson, Ms. Jamie Flynn, and Mr. Juan Carlos Santana, who are candidates for the District Five seat. I would like to note, the Chamber does not endorse any candidate. That is not what we're here to do. We are simply here to ask questions, some collected from the community, some that we had ourselves. Ask questions, get answers, give the candidates a chance to talk directly to their voters. But essentially, our goal is to make sure that we have a voter base that is prepared to go cast their votes and has all the information that they may, you know, they may need to cast a good and proper vote in August. So, welcome to the three of you. We're excited to have you with us today. And we'll dive right in and give the floor. I'm looking at my alphabetical by last name list. We'll give Michael Atkinson his introductory three minutes.
Good evening. Thank you for having us. I'm Michael Atkinson, candidate for District Five. I'm a general contractor in the community, been over fifteen years. Been married for over fifteen years, have two stepsons and a granddaughter. We love the community. We're in the community. Been a part of community service for years. We want to continue to be a part, give back to our community, and make Hendrick County better tomorrow than it was today. That's our plan. So, with that being said, you know, I'm not real long-winded. So, you know, we'll get into some more with some of these questions.
All right. Thank you. Up next, Ms. Jamie Flynn.
Thank you. Thank you. Good afternoon, Hendrick County. My name is Jamie Flynn. I am a lifelong resident of Hendrick County. I have owned in District Five for over fifteen years, going on my sixteenth year. So, very much so rooted into District Five and a lot of the communities. I am the Housing Director for the Seminole Tribal Florida. So, I've worked in the government sector for a sovereign nation for sixteen years now, something I'm very proud of. I'm a Republican candidate for your choice for County Commissioner, District Five, and I look forward to answering a lot of the questions that are coming up.
Great. Thank you. Mr. Santana, would you like to introduce yourself? You have to unmute yourself.
Now, you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Hello? You hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Okay. My name is Juan Carlos Santana. I live in Montura Ranch Estates, 360 Appaloosa Avenue for five and a half years. I have been a volunteer with the Cherokee for four years in over the east sector of Hendrick County, which is District Five and Four. I work as a jail tech in the jailhouse in the Cherokee Office in La Belle. Jail tech is a, now they call it jail tech, they used to call it control room officer. I am a former state of Florida correctional officer. I work in Hendrick CI, I work in Everglades, I work in South Florida CI. I used to live here in Hendrick County from nineteen ninety-six to two thousand. I love Hendrick County. I used to come to Hendrick County since nineteen seventy-nine, do hunting, a lot of things I used to do here. I love this community. That's why I'm a volunteer with the Cherokee. And I see that the area of the District Number Five, the woods, have been neglected by the Commission, especially by the Commission that is there now, the Democrat. That's why I'm running. I have been there with the community all the time. I have been a Central County Water Control District Supervisor for four years. I've been with the community all the time, and I'm planning to continue with the community in District Five all the time because there is a lot of need. I believe, can I talk about my agenda now or not?
Um, no, sir. Well, I mean, you can. You have a minute and eight seconds left.
Oh, beautiful, beautiful, beautiful. I want to build a central sector for the Cherokee Office, which is a central sector would be Montura Ranch Estate, Pioneer, La Dica, Flag Hall, making a mini station in Montura Ranch Estates. So, the deputy response time will be a lot quicker. Also, to build a central station, central sector for the fire and rescue, making Montura Ranch a volunteer of the Fire Department there, the central sector station, to, in that way, we minimize the response time in emergency situation. That's part of my agenda.
Okay. Well, welcome, all three of you. Thank you for joining us today. And without any further ado, we're just going to jump right on into these questions. I do ask that, in an effort to not be like super redundant, if you don't hear the question, I will repeat it when it's your turn to answer. All you have to do is let me know. Otherwise, I'm just going to ask it one time and then let you all, you know, answer one at a time. So, Mr. Atkinson, you will go first. And the question is, with a small follow-up, what qualifications and experience make you the best candidate for Hendrick County Commission District One? And can you provide a specific example from your past work that could demonstrate your leadership and problem-solving skills?
Okay. So, some of my, you know, experiences as being a contractor with building, budgeting, being on the City Commission, give me some experience with the local government, give me knowledge to, you know, MSBUs, taxes, millage, you know, everything that goes with it. So, being involved with the community, I get to hear what people's concerns are. And I think being involved in all of the county gives me the advantage to listen to all the needs. And then we can work together to come up with solutions for each district. Some of the specific examples is the flagpole coming into City of Cluiston. The city got a quote on that for a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. We were able to come in, help get it on track, and we ended up getting that project done for under twenty-five thousand dollars. You know, we were able to do that through our company, and that, you know, helps us give back to the community because we have been blessed. So, that's some of the, you know, one of the things that of a problem-solving skill on a project that was recent.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you. Ms. Flynn?
Yes. So, first and foremost, my years within the district, I've lived most of my life in District Five. I've owned in District Five for over fifteen years, and like I said, I've raised my girls here with my husband. Currently working on my Masters in Business Administration. I plan to graduate soon with only two classes remaining. I've dedicated my career to serving communities and the housing industry. With housing being an economic driver of any community, these skills and knowledge will ensure I approach any situation with a community-first mindset. I am alumni of Leadership Florida, which is a prestigious group of leaders and business professionals throughout our great state. I've completed the Hendrick Glades Leadership and most recently awarded the Top Forty Under Forty. Working in government for over fifteen years, I've dedicated countless hours to policy development, budgets, KPI and metric development, as well as team-building and problem-solving. When policy doesn't fit the need for the people, I've worked countless hours in the EOC, pre and post storms, ensuring the people of District Five are well-cared-for in the event of an emergency. In addition to, I've negotiated contracts for large and small businesses to provide much-needed services within our county and throughout our great state of Florida.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Flynn. Mr. Santana?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Well, like I tell you, my background is in law enforcement. I've been a state correctional officer, former state correctional officer. I used to have my security guard company in South Florida for over fifteen years. Right now, like I tell you, I've been a volunteer with the Cherokee for four years. I've worked as a jail tech in the jailhouse. My concern is the safety of the residents of Hendrick County. I, part of my agenda is building a new building for the Cherokee Office, a new building for the jailhouse, which is old, and also to do a salary increase to the deputies, to the road deputies and to the correctional officer deputies, to the level of Lee County Cherokee, which is sixty-two thousand. In that way, we don't, we don't lose so many good officers because of the pay rate, because of the salary. Okay? So, that's part of my agenda. Also, the safety. Part of the safety of the residents of Hendrick County is with making a central sector for the Cherokee Office with a mini station in Montura Ranch Estates, also with the fire and rescue. Okay? So, so they can respond with a lot quicker response time. But right now, it's going to be far to my end. Also, also to build shelters for the school bus stops. Because the school bus stop in the rural area of Hendrick County, Pioneer, La Dica, they don't have shelter for the children. The weather condition we raised, they have no shelter, want to protect themselves. We have danger of salmonella over here, like snakes, all types. They don't have no place to be secure. That's part of my agenda. I have talked to many people in the government in Hendrick County. All of them give me excuses, but I got diarrhea. It's going to be my priority to do that. At the same time, I want to bring businesses to your area.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Santana. And the next question is going to go to you, Ms. Flynn, first. What are your top three priorities if elected to the Hendrick County Commission? And how would you achieve these priorities within, you know, within your term?
Sure. So, fiscal clarity and responsibility, the evaluation, creation of maintenance plans, and further evaluation of and/or the creation of programs through the purchasing policy that supports our local businesses. So, with an operations mindset, it is important to first start off with a true understanding of internal and external resources, meeting with our county directors to fully understand the challenges they face on a daily basis to accomplish the task at hand. Fiscal clarity will be provided to the constituents of Hendrick County with a community-first approach that reflects the needs versus the wants as it pertains to fiscal responsibility. Maintenance plans. As someone who has created these from scratch, I am confident that I can be a leader in the evaluation creation for our county. Launching a full program to first gather data of the needs, then prioritizing those needs with a five-year period. Through the review and evaluation of the solicitation process and rewriting policy if needed, the business owners of Hendrick County who are properly credentialed should receive additional points when being scored. Furthermore, launching educational online training would allow business owners to connect with and learn how to properly bid on our solicitations and which bids are coming available.
Thank you, Ms. Flynn. Mr. Santana, if you would like to answer the question on your top three priorities?
Top three priority? Yes, ma'am. Building a Cherokee Office Building, a jailhouse building, which they're going to be together, making a central sector for the Cherokee Office and for the fire rescue in, with the, with the mini section in Montura Ranch Estates, and the school bus shelters for the children.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Mr. Atkinson?
So, three of my top priorities is public safety, roads and drainage, and taxes. Public safety, as Mr. Santana said, in Pioneer, La Dica, Montura, the response times are extremely long. We've got to do something to get those under. I've been endorsed by Southwest Florida Firefighters and Paramedics Association. This is the group that represents Hendrick County EMS. So, we've had several conversations, and hopefully in the future, we'll have more conversations to, to get more EMS staff throughout the county. Roads and drainage are a huge issue. Pioneer in two thousand seventeen, when Irma came through, they flooded. A month ago, they flooded again with the little storm that we had come through. So, there's issues going on with culverts and everything else we have to address. Wasteful spending with the taxes. We have to go in. We can't rubber stamp everything. Just because we've done it for so long, we've got to look at it and make hard decisions on what we really need. We're to the point where we don't have any time to put things off that need to be done. And hopefully, working with staff between EMS, fire, road and bridge, the county administrator, we can get a lot of these things done and look at these things line by line.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Mr. Santana, we'll direct this question to you first. How will you address the economic development needs of Hendrick County?
Okay. Good question. The development needs of Hendrick County is very important, okay? Because I believe here we have like a paradise, paradise in south-central Florida. It's a really good place for businesses to come over and build housing complex and different type of businesses, or a lot of business companies. One thing I want to mention, and I find out through the years, coming through this area, we have to open our mind, you know, to new businesses. Because sometimes I have heard commissioners, commissioners from the city of Cluiston, also from the county, have been close to open the doors for big businesses, to big, big businesses to come over to the city and to the county. So, my, my, my agenda would be a policy for open doors for all big businesses to come in. We have to have open mind on that. We cannot be close-minded. I say, "No, no, no. We don't want home people to come in." "No, no, no. We don't want these other company." "No, no, no. Come in. Come in." Because that is going to build more employee for a citizen, for a resident. So, we have to have an open minded on that. Another thing I'm going to tell you, I'm going to be speaking up, is I don't believe in impact, impact taxes. Impact taxes that they had and they want to put again in the county, I don't believe in that. I am a Ronald Rigo believer. No taxes, less taxes, the best for the residents, the best for the businesses. Because if you want businesses to come into Hendrick County, I will put impact, impact taxes, building taxes, ten thousand, fifteen thousand, twenty thousand, they don't want to come. So, if you want for them to come, we have to make it easier for them to come here and do business with us. So, I am against the impact taxes. So, I'm going to be having very good... Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Atkinson, the same question for you?
So, so for me, I think we need to focus more on the businesses that we do have, to promote them, and let them grow into larger companies. Before, in the past, we've, the city, the county has always put their, all their eggs in one basket. That's just not something that we can do. We can welcome big businesses that want to come to the area, but I don't think we should focus all of our attention and spend all of our resources to bring them here. Because nine times out of ten, it doesn't work out. We just waste county money that we don't have. Like I said, if we promote local businesses, give them incentives to, to grow into bigger businesses that, you know, more employment and everything else. Work it, and we can work on policies with staff and different directors to make things easier, make them flow a little bit better, where when people do come to expand, get permits, bring a business into town, they're able to, to get that done fairly easy.
All right. Thank you. And Ms. Flynn?
Yeah. So, I want to start off with the meaning of economic development, which is the process in which an economy grows or changes and becomes more advanced, especially when both economic and social conditions are improved. So, when we're discussing economic development, it's important to have a plan in place, master planning and zoning to ensure the overall flow of the county continue to fit the demand and the needs, ensuring we have a project for the overall county and not just individual parcels and piecemeal zoning for each lot. Advancement in the consideration of technology, education, social, and residential needs of Hendrick County. I would act as a key liaison between the public and private sector, working with planning, zoning, and permitting needs, ensuring the county has an operational plan and change man and, change management, followed by strategic planning, to ensure we have the progress in master planning for Hendrick County. Also, making sure we have progression updates to our communities and our constituents to ensure they are aware of what part of the planning process we are in and that they buy into the plan as well.
All right. Thank you so much. Just one second. So, now we are back to Mr. Atkinson. What are your plans to improve infrastructure in Hendrick County, including roads, utilities, and public services? And how will you, how would you propose that you fund these improvements?
So, roads in District Five are ridiculously horrible. They've been neglected for a lot of years. I don't know what the reason for it is. I don't know if it's the lack of planning. I know there's a lack of resources. But we have to, we have to get a long-term plan on these roads to make sure that they're going to be replaced in a timely manner. The longer these roads go, they start getting subbase problems, and then the road goes from, you know, one, one amount to double, triple, to, to get those back to acceptable conditions. Funding these things, we can try to go to the state, even federal, through MSBUs like they've just done over in the Port La Belle side in the community, and look at some of this stuff that's on autopilot, you know, and make sure that we address this stuff. And like I said earlier, we just don't rubber stamp because we've been doing it for so long.
All right. Ms. Flynn?
Yes. So, maintenance plans and proper budgeting, launching an evaluation of current infrastructure and roads within a five-year period to ensure we capture the grant monies needed to know how to represent the needs in Hendrick County and in Tallahassee. This is why selection of our leadership is so important, Hendrick County. We must have proper representation, not just here in our communities, but also somebody representing us in Tallahassee. Evaluating the internal and external resources, knowing what our grant needs are and how to go after them. We currently have a grants team. We need to know what they are needing so that we can ensure we give them the proper resources and that they know what kind of grants to look for on behalf of Hendrick County.
Thank you. Mr. Santana?
Yes, ma'am. You're talking about the infrastructure, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. One thing is very important I want to mention. It's District Number Five, which is Montura Ranch Estate, Pioneer, La Dica, Flag Hall, and the surrounding area of Cluiston. Let me tell you one thing I experienced by working at the Central County Water Control District as a supervisor of the board for four years. I have noticed that the county collects our taxes, our taxes, and, but they use mainly in, to building the infrastructure of La Belle, Port La Belle and Cluiston. They forget about the rural zone. They forget big time about the rural zone, which is the District Number Five. And that's very important for me. I want equal investment of the tax money in the infrastructure, also for the rural zone of Hendrick County, not only for La Belle, Port La Belle, and Cluiston, also for the rural area, because they collect taxes from us. So, they should put the taxes in building our infrastructure, roads, all the areas that we need to improve, which you use that tax money for the rural area of Hendrick County also. I'm bringing a new business from the outside. It's going to create more money for the county to use for, use it for the infrastructure. That's why I'm saying that we have to bring businesses, big businesses, from the county and everywhere in the nation. We have to have open mind. We cannot continue having closed mind, telling the big businesses not to come to Hendrick County, or to Cluiston, or to La Belle.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Flynn, we'll go back to you. How do you plan to ensure transparency and accountability in the County Commission? Specifically, you know, what measures might you implement to keep the public informed and more involved?
Sure. So, community meetings, quarterly, in person, and meeting recaps via social media. I've conducted community meetings throughout the state of Florida and various parts of the United States. I understand their value and the importance of connecting with the people. I'd like to also evaluate the county website. Let's look for ways to make sure we have a user-friendly website and timely releases of information. It's important we are one team, working together for the people of our county and our communities. My career over the past sixteen years has supported me the opportunity to work with communities as far south as Tamiami Trail to as far west as New Mexico. I've conducted presentations regarding policy updates, program creations, and the importance of being a homeowner and how to sustain a healthy and safe environment for your home.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Santana?
Yes, ma'am. Which one is the question, please?
Yes, absolutely. Not a problem. How do you plan to ensure transparency and accountability in the Hendrick County Commission? And specifically, what measures would you like to implement to keep the public more involved and informed?
Well, my main thing would be, be out there with the, with the resident of District Number Five, which the person that is in the chair is missing in action. I never have seen in, in any of the rural area of, of, of Montura Ranch Estates, Pioneer, La Dica, and Flag Hall like my opponents. I have never seen out there. Only in election time I see my opponents also in, in the rural area of Hendrick County. So, I'd be out there, like I have been all this time, out there with the residents of District Five. And I, I believe in the meetings, we'll, we'll, to give more time to the public to speak up in the meeting, during the meeting time, and interact. I have seen the meetings of Hendrick County, which I think are good, are good, very professional. I like it, but I believe we should give more time to the residents that want to go there and speak up and interact with the, with the commissioners. And that is going to be my main thing. But my main thing is being out there with the residents of, I mean, the resident of Hendrick County, District Number Five, and all the residents, all the residents of Hendrick County like I have been up to now.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Atkinson?
So, one of the things with transparency is, I see in the meetings, they, sometimes the director comes up to present an item, and they just throw out a motion. They cut him off to throw out a motion. I think these things need to be addressed. They need to be said what they are, the economic impact of them, if it's positive, negative, and that'll give us accountability to let the people that can't make it to the meetings or see the agenda that, you know, they can watch these meetings online and get the full picture of what you're voting on. Community involvement's huge. I've been involved with the community for years. Been in Pioneer at community meetings, been in Montura at their meetings. That's some of the things that I'll continue to do, is be at these meetings to give advice and work between these communities and the County Commission to make sure that District Five is represented.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Santana, the next question, we'll start with you. How will you address the needs and concerns of the diverse communities within Hendrick County?
I tell you, I gotta tell you my opinion, and I like to be transparent. I like to be respectfully, but transparent. I like to be respectfully, but transparent. That's the way I am. That's the way I am right now, as the way I'm gonna be in the future. Uh, I have been coming to Hendrick County since nineteen seventy-nine. Okay, because I love hunting, I love outdoors and I'm an outdoor person. So, I love the people of Hendrick County. Okay? I worked in the Hendrick CI three years as the State Correctional Officer. I was the only Q one born out there. I have my experiences. I should keep it to myself. Uh, let me tell you, I love the way. Yeah, I wanna keep it to myself. Uh, it has to be between me and God. Uh, so, so, so the transformation that I have seen in Hendrick County, I love, love it. Because we have blend. We have, uh, we are a truly melting pot right now. And I love that. Before, I bump head many times with the old timers. Because they don't believe, few of them, I don't say all of them, but a few of them, they don't believe in melting pot. They believe only Hendrick County be one ethnic, uh, uh, group. Okay, and, uh. Uh, even though I love them, because I love everybody, no matter how they think, they have to like to think the way they think. But I didn't like that. But now I see the change on the new generations. Okay, and I love that. I love that. Because the main thing for me, I'm a Q one refugee. I came to the United States when I was fifteen. Excuse me, I get emotional.
That's okay. We'll give you about ten extra seconds if you wanna finish that thought.
No, no, thank you ma'am, thank you ma'am. So, so I came here, uh, as a refugee in nineteen seventy-four. And, uh, I believe we are all Americans. We are all Americans who live here. And I like to see, I mean, I mean, I love to see the transformation that Hendrick County have come through. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir. Um, Mr. Atkinson, your question?
So, District Five alone has about six different groups, communities. Pioneer, La Dica, uh, Montura, Flag Hall, Hookers Point, Big Cypress. Everyone different, unique in their own way. Uh, and we have to work with each one of those groups. To make sure they're represented for their needs. Uh, none, none of them have the same needs and none of them have the same wants. So, i- it's very challenging. It is three quarters of the county, uh, that represents District Five. Uh, so, we have to make sure that we are able to communicate and give one of the. The representation they deserve.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Ms. Flynn?
Go ahead and repeat the question for me.
Certainly. How will you address the needs and concerns of the diverse communities within Hendrick County?
You know, I think we're hearing diversity quite a bit in the news and in our communities. Diversity, equity and inclusion is a huge conversation that we're hearing about. And I think Mr. Santana made a great point. We have evolved immensely over the years in being able to accept one another. And I think that that's a great thing. Um, the only way to ensure that we are able to connect with all of our communities is to be in our communities. That's why it's so important when we make the selection for our next Hendrick County District Five. Uh, County Commissioner, that we elect somebody that has been in this district, a part of this district. That has lived here and raised their families in it. Because that's how you really understand the communities, by being somebody who is there, connected with them, a part of them. Not just stepping up when it's time for an election.
Alright, thank you, Ms. Flynn. Um, so the next question, we'll go to Mr. Atkinson first. If you wanna go ahead and get yourself unmuted, um, Mr. Atkinson. And it is, what are your plans to enhance public safety and emergency services in Hendrick County? Um, and how do you intend to collaborate with, you know, other local law enforcement and emergency service providers?
So, with emergency, public safety, emergency services, um, like I stated earlier. The mid-county section of Hendrick County is lacking in a huge way. I've talked to some firemen from Clifton because the fire department in, uh, Montura, Pioneer. Are lacking volunteers because they are yet seen. So they're having to go out to Montura and Pioneer. It's taking them forty-five minutes to get to Montura. That's life or death. That's, you know, a structure burnt or a structure saved. Uh, we have to find ways to bridge this gap and take over those departments to make them run correctly. Uh, this is some ways, you know, I, like I said, I was endorsed by the Southwest Florida Firefighters and Paramedics. Uh, I like to work with them, see how we can get more paramedics, keep some here. Um, I know we have to do some stuff with some pays, uh, salaries and everything else, uh, to ensure that. Uh, but working with the sheriff and the directors of emergency management, uh, I think we can get some of this taken care of.
Alright, thank you, Ms. Flynn.
Yes, so I've worked with FEMA and various public safety professionals for many years. I've worked hurricanes and fire EOCs right here in our district. Plans to enhance our public safe, safety would be to evaluate the current fuel plans. What's the demand versus the supply for our fuel? We also need to evaluate our debris plans. We have to ensure that we align with FEMA and we have a way to get debrees picked up as swiftly as possible. Establishing, establishing emergency agreements and contracts in accordance with the county needs and restoration services. In the event of a catastrophic loss. We need to evaluate the communication methods and technology available in the event of power outages. As somebody who is here during, uh, Hurricane Irma in District Five, we didn't have power for two weeks. And so we also need to ensure we have mutual aid agreements. Hendrick County should ensure we have mutual aid agreements with all surrounding emergency services. Hosting quarterly meetings that would bolster effective communication amongst those professionals in various areas.
Alright, thank you. Mr. Santana, if you wanna unmute yourself. Um, I had to put you on mute, I apologize, but your, uh, sheriff's office radio was causing a little bit of feedback in the background. You do need to click unmute. We cannot hear you, Mr. Santana. There you go.
Hello, hello.
Yes.
Okay ma'am. Uh, so we talking about safety, right, law enforcement, right?
Correct. Public Safety and Emergency Services.
Okay, that is my experience of all my life. I started working as a security officer in South Florida in nineteen seventy-nine. Like I said, I have a security guard company or, hello?
You're good, go ahead.
Do you see me?
Yes, sir, we see you. Go right ahead.
I don't know what happened, I don't see you. Okay, so, so that's my, my experience of a lifetime. I, I work, uh, a former state correctional officer. I work with the sheriff. Uh, as a volunteer for four years, I work at the Yell, uh, uh, house. I know the need, I mean, what it need, it needs to have, uh, the resident of, uh, Central, I mean, uh, uh, of Hendrick County. We have to build the central sector, the sheriff's office, uh, putting a mini station, a Montura Ranch Estates. Uh, with an OIC, with the capital. OIC that is gonna be supervising all those deputies. Right there in, in the mini station in Montura Ranch Estate. I, 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 I talk, I speak to the chief, uh, 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 Kevin Nelson. And I explained that to him. He told me, he thinks that's a great idea. He's been trying to do that for a while now. I told him when I be at the chair as the commissioner of Hendrick County, I will make sure that we have a central county. Uh, 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 sector of the sheriff's office. Uh, at the same time, I wanna build, uh, uh, a central sector for the fire and, um, a rescue. Because now any emergency situation that we have in the, you know, Montura Ranch Estates or Pioneer or La Dica, it take about thirty minutes. From the trucks, ambulance to come from, from Clifton to, uh, to the area of, uh, of the, of central sector of, uh, Hendrick County. And, uh, in, in that way, the, the response time is gonna be a lot quicker, okay? Uh, make sure they will pay higher salary to the deputies of Hendrick County and the, and the correctional officers. Okay, at the standard of Lee County, so they don't have to leave to Lee County. We have very good, uh, officers over here right now. They are risking their life daily to protect their life and property. So they deserve to be at the same level that Lee County, uh, Sheriff Agency, which, which is, uh, sixty-two thousand, uh, uh, dollars a year.
Alright, thank you.
Same time, I wanna build, that's it?
Yes, that was your time. Yes, sir. That's alright, that's alright. You guys are doing pretty good. Um, so this next one will go to Ms. Flynn. What are your views on affordable housing and how do you plan to, or how do you plan to address that critical need here in Hendrick County?
Sure, so serving on the Federal Home Loan Bank of Atlanta's Board, I currently represent the state of Florida. They're the bank of banks. I can tell you there is grant monies available to obtain. Housing being one of the largest economic drivers, the federal government has made affordable housing one of the top discussions and concerns. And working in the housing sector for over fifteen years, when we talk about affordable housing, it isn't just the mortgage payment. It's the insurance, taxes and maintenance upkeep. Let's focus on planned developments, resilient housing and grant funding. And in speaking with the counting, I'm told, with the county, I'm told we have one person who works in the grants department. Once elected, I'd like to evaluate that department and those contracts, uh, the consulting contracts that, that our employee is working with. To better understand their needs, to ensure that resources are available to connect with important stakeholders. And contacts that I can bring to the table as your next county commissioner. And we can jumpstart the initiative for affordable housing right here in our district.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Santana, uh, what are your views on affordable housing? And how do you plan to address that critical need here in Hendrick County?
Uh, uh, my main, uh, uh, issue is gonna be the impact, uh, taxes, no impact taxes. That way, everybody that wanna come in, uh, uh, our, our beautiful Hendrick County. They can come in and build a house without have to pay impact taxes. Because I believe that will take away a lot of people that they wanna invest here, they wanna come here and build a house. If they see they have to pay ten thousand, fifteen thousand dollars for impact taxes, they don't wanna come over here. They're gonna go to another county near us where they don't wanna be having impact taxes. So, uh, no impact taxes for me, uh, when I get to the commission. At the same time, uh, I believe we can help the people getting loans. In the, 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 there's a lot of people out there that they don't have the money to pay, uh, down, big down payment for build house. We, as a government, we should try to, to make some type of way. Uh, talking to the legislature in Tallahassee, to the representative in Tallahassee, trying to, to help them to, uh, uh, buy housing, uh, uh, with a low down payment or with no down payment. Uh, that's, I, that's, I think that would be very important for the people that wanna have a house here. And they don't have the money to, big money to pay a, pay a big down, down payment. So we can accommodate them to get a, uh, uh, easy loan to, to, to have the houses down here. That's my, that's my main thing.
Alright, thank you. Um, Mr. Atkinson?
Affordable housing, um, you know, we have to make sure that we that people are able to build cheaper here than they can in our neighboring counties. If we raise a tax, raise MSBUs, raise everything that we have every year. Instead of really looking at what we have and what we really need, we're not gonna get these people to come here. Just like Port La Belle, Port La Belle's been building out. They've got land, Fanyan Village, there's lots. Um, Clifton's landlocked, we don't have any lots available to build on. So, that drives up the cost and makes them unaffordable. We get people from out of the state that are coming here to move to Florida, that are selling homes for four or five times what they cost here. And they're driving the locals out of homes, uh, because they can't afford to buy homes. Uh, and they're just driving the values up, taxes are more, uh, so many things. We can work with, uh, grant writers, we can work with, uh, our local housing to get grants. Um, they do all the time for housing for low income, uh, remodels and different things like that. So, so there's things we can do federally, state, uh, and local to help push some of this stuff along.
Alright, thank you. Mr. Santana, we'll start with you on this one. What initiatives would you propose to promote community engagement and involvement in local government?
Well, that's very important, that's very important because I have been a Republican activist, uh, since nineteen eighty. Uh, when Ronald Rigo was elected, I was an activist for Ronald Rigo campaign. And, um, I've been going through the years to many, uh, uh, different, uh, uh, meetings. Uh, and the Day County Commission, Higher Leader Commission, Miami Commission. Because I love politics, because politics have to do with the daily-to-daily life of the residents. And here in America, we are fortunate that we have the best system of government in the world, which is a democracy, okay? Um, I will, uh, talk to the people, have, uh, open meetings, open meetings. Uh, me as a commissioner, I will be, uh, talking to the residents of, uh, of, uh, Montura Ranch Estates, Pioneer, La Dica. Flag Hall, making meetings in the, in the, in the, in the Montura Ranch, uh, uh, area. Uh, clubhouse, uh, making meetings there in the clubhouse, talking to the people, having open doors, open doors. And, uh, so they can be feeling comfortable coming and talking to us, okay? Uh, 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 seeing the needs of the people is very important. When the people, the residents see that we have open door policies for them, uh, they feel comfortable that we come more to the meetings. Okay, that's one thing we have to do. We have to have open door policies with all the residents and go to them. Normally, they come to us. I believe we have to do more meetings like in Pioneer. Let's go to Pioneer, all the commissioners of Hendrick County, go to Pioneer every few months. I, I, I make a meeting in Pioneer. Let's make a meeting in, 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 in Montura Ranch every few months. Let's make a meeting in Flag Hall every few months. Let's go to La Dica, make a meeting in La Dica. Also, so we be in contact with the people there in those areas. And don't be just, uh, sitting there in the commission in the cities and, uh, that's it. All right, we have to go to them too.
Thank you. Um, thank you, Mr. Santana. Mr. Atkinson, the same question?
So, we've gotta be involved with the community, uh, in different groups, uh. Out in the public, going into each community, going to their meetings, talking with those people. Uh, you know, we've, we've donated our time and our efforts for years. Uh, when Hurricane Irma came through, uh, the city was without power for weeks. Uh, the outlined areas were, um, you know, we got out, we donated our time. I didn't go to work for two weeks, um, passing out food, water, uh, and different things. That's what we have to do. Uh, we have to, to get out there and let these people know that we're not above them, that we put our pants on the same way they do. And that we're approachable and that we'll listen to their concerns and not just hear them. Uh, and then we'll take that and we'll use it and move their voice forward, uh, as a community.
Alright, thank you. Ms. Flynn?
Yes, I wanna emphasize a portion of that question. It says promote community engagement and involvement. And so communities are the backbone of government. It's important we have regularly scheduled community interactions. Such as meetings and social and informative and use technology to our advantage. Now more than ever, we have to make sure we are staying engaged and aware of what government is doing and decisions they are making on our behalf. I've worked in communities for the past sixteen years. I've attended communities, like I said, across the state of Florida and as far west as New Mexico. I'm very versed on the importance and implementation of those. In addition, I've had my girls right here in District Five, a district very important to us. We've been very active in local organizations, specifically the 4-H and FFA. My family participates annually in the local cattlemen and cattlewomen's dinners. We love those steaks as we all do. We love those steaks as we all do here in Henry County and raising money for the scholarships for our local youth. We often donate items so that the cattlewomen can auction off uh every year annually at their dinner. So we always look forward to those events each year. And I think that if we can promote more of those kinds of events, we'll have more interaction.
All right, thank you. Our final question, we'll start with Mr. Atkinson. What steps will you take to promote fiscal responsibility and effective budgeting within the Henry, within the county commission?
So it goes back to what I said earlier, we can't rubber stamp things that's in the budget that's on autopilot. We have to address those things. We've got to take our time. We're putting ourselves in this position. We have to take our time to really look at these budgets and see what the needs are. And being involved with our community, we know what the needs are, and then we can fight for this to be a responsible budget and be effective, where we're getting things done and not just pushing money through the county that we're not seeing anything for it.
All right, thank you. Ms. Flynn?
Yes, so fiscal responsibility and effective budgeting. So that comes down when you do KPIs, metrics, quarterly and cumulative run rates and evaluation of those numbers. As I direct my team in my current role, it's important that these numbers mean something to you and make you feel a certain type of way. Fiscal responsibility is more than just addition and subtraction. It's setting goals, evaluating processes, and achieving those goals and ultimately condition, conducting an analysis on whether the county was able to reach them or maybe we fell short and why. So my time in government, I've established budgets, I've analyzed run rates and created a thirty-five page KPI report. I'm well versed on the process. Through budgets, we can create strategic planning, which often happens. And establishing, once again, the needs versus the wants and aligning the prioritization of projects based on the evaluation and the budget process.
All right, thank you, Ms. Flynn. Mr. Santana?
Uh, yes ma'am, thank you. Uh, first, I would like to, to, to do like a, like a make sure that the money that comes to the, to the Henry County Commission is equally distributed. Equally distributed in all the sector of Henry County, okay? Not only in the sector of uh, of the city of La Belle and Cloiston. Uh, also in the rural area of Henry County, which is District Five. I would like to see that money distributed in the infrastructure. Uh, many things, building new schools in Montura Ranch Estates, uh, uh, for the lot of children that we have out there. Uh, at the same time, I would like to see the money going for building a new sheriff's office building and a jailhouse and uh giving higher salaries to the deputies and correctional officers. Uh, building shelters for the school uh boss uh, uh, stops for the children. Uh, so, so distributing the money more equally, okay? That's very important for me to do in my community commission.
All right. Um, so that concludes all of the questions that we have. Um, I, my timer is showing about fifty-three minutes. So by the time we get through our closing statements, I do think that we'll be close to that one hour mark. And I don't want to keep you all much longer than that. Um, there's, I, I hear rumblings of thunder too, so we actually lose service too when it starts to rain. Um, but with that, I, I do want to let you know, we're looking at Facebook, there are a lot of comments. So I want to encourage each of you to go in, you know, just make some sort of comment. Your name, why someone should vote for you, following, you know, whatever. It's not, it's not for us about getting the comments, it's for you about getting the notifications from Facebook when people continue to comment on this. Um, the chamber is really always so glad, they're timing me out now too. The chamber is really always so glad to do these and give our candidates um a great platform to just be able to continue to communicate with your voters. So be sure, it's on the Cloiston Chamber of Commerce's Facebook page. Be sure to go in there and um, and answer some of these questions. Look at them, answer them. Um, you know, engage, interact with these folks that are taking their time out to try to talk to you. Um, so with that, Mr. Atkinson, if you want to go ahead and do your uh final three minutes to speak directly to your voters, um, tell them, you know, why you believe that they should vote for you. And then Ms. Flynn and Mr. Santana, you will each uh get your opportunity to do that as well.
Great. Thank you for having us again. Uh, I would like to tell them all that, you know, I'm here, born and raised in Henry County. Uh, our business is here, our business has been here for over thirty-five years. Uh, we're not new in the community. Uh, we're not new to community service. It's something that we've been doing for years. Uh, and I've continued to do it regardless of the outcome on August twentieth. Uh, I asked for their vote on August twentieth to be the next Henry County District Five Commissioner uh to represent them so they know they have somebody that's involved in the community and that they can approach. Uh, if they got any questions, you can feel free to reach out to me. Uh, I'm on Facebook, uh, got a website, uh, and be watching the Facebook for videos uh about different information throughout the county.
All right, thank you. Uh, Ms. Flynn?
Yes, good afternoon once again, and thank you for this opportunity. District Five, I ask that when you're selecting who to vote for, consider somebody who has been a community member with you, who has been a landowner with you, who has been in multiple communities within District Five. I've lived here, I've dedicated over fifteen years here. My family and I have set roots here. As a qualified professional, somebody with a soon-to-be master's degree in business and administration, somebody that can go to Tallahassee and represent us. Someone with experience in government and who will be able to properly represent our needs and our wants and what we really need to evolve here in Henry County. It's important that we don't just go for somebody who's jumping from one district to the next or who maybe who is out there trying to get the most popular vote. Popularity is no longer the most important. It's time that we ensure that we have somebody who is educated, who is qualified. We need someone who can actually represent us in Tallahassee. And I ask for your vote as somebody, as one of you who has been right here in this community, raising our kids together, that can represent us. So when you vote in August, vote for Flynn for the win on August twentieth.
Thank you. Mr. Santana? I'm just talking like you guys can hear me, sorry. Mr. Santana?
Thank you, thank you very much, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Uh, 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 well, I would like to say, I believe uh, in America, we should go back to the roots, okay? To, to, to how this coun- country was created by the founding fathers. Uh, it's a, uh, uh, an elected official is a public servant. An elected official is a public servant. We are elected to serve the people, for the people, okay? We should not be going to be elected as a public official, yes, to make money for our businesses, okay? So that's one thing I see in America today that have changed the concept of the founding fathers. We have to be public servants. That's why I believe in volunteering. Volunteering with the sheriff's office, volunteering with the fire department, volunteering. Because in that way, you are serving the public. That's why we are. A sheriff is still within, which is a great sheriff, is a public servant. He do it very good. Uh, all the commissioners are public servants. So that's what I want to be. I want to be a public servant of the Henry County District Five. I am out there to make money for my company, uh, 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 or anything like that. I believe in going out there and giving services to the people of Henry County District Number Five. So I'm going to be a public servant, like I tell you. I believe in building a, 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 a center sector of the sheriff's office and for the fire and rescue, okay? And I believe in uh, uh, increasing the salaries for the Henry County deputies and correctional officers. Uh, building shelters for the school bosses tops. And uh, I will be out there like I have been up to now, like I have been up to now with you guys. And I have shown, because I have been four years as a supervisor of central county water control district board. And I've been out there when the last hurricane, Ian, 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 whatever the name is, I was out there. I was out there with you guys under the wind. I was out there with you guys when we didn't, we didn't have electricity. And let me tell you, to be honest, the only commissioner that I have seen from Henry County, the only person that I saw up there was Ramon Iglesias. Which I congratulate him, my respect to him. He was the only one that was out there with us, under the wind, under the rain. Even one day I was out there about three o'clock in the morning because we had an emergency, emergency situation on the canals. And when I look back, Ramon Iglesias was behind me. So, so my respect to him. So I'm going to be like that. I'm going to be a public servant and I'm going to be out there with you guys, no matter what. I don't want to be missing action. No, 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 no. Because I, I, I know like, I, I am not showing up only in elections. No, no, no. I've been out there every day of the year.
Thank you for ending us on that note, and thank you all, um, all three of you again for joining. And uh, we'll look forward to seeing how this election cycle shakes out. The best of luck to all three of you.
Thank you.
All right, you guys have a great day. Thank you, bye-bye.